I'd like to call this meeting of the Washington County School Board in, uh, after a moment of silence. I'd like for our attorney, Scott Bennett, to lead us in the pledge of the flag.
Gentlemen, please, we begin here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming. Uh, we have several teachers, I think, and we got, I don't see no county commissioners. Do you?
Uh, Mr. Flannery?
Do you see?
Don't see any right now. But thank you all. I need a motion to consider the consent agenda.
What's on, Ben?
Second.
End of discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Dallinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flannery?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Aight. Now I need a motion on the meeting agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a, uh, amendment to the meeting agenda under new business and add V O E Connect, please, a new program.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion? Roll call vote, please, on the amendment.
Mr. Hammond?
Aight.
Ms. Dallinger?
Aight.
Mr. Flannery?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Dangert?
Aight.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Aight. Okay, now on the, the meeting agenda, I need a-
As an amendment.
I'll make a motion. We approve it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Uh, end of discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Dallinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flannery?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Dangert?
Aight.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Aight. Directors report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have with us this evening performers from Westview Elementary School. Would Crockett graduate Caleb Shaw please come in? Mr. Shaw, the floor is yours.
Do what?
It's all yours.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all so much for having us. This is our, Westview Elementary, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade course member-
So Velo again is a very unique program. It allows for our volunteers to connect directly with your students from their office for 30 minutes a week. The students read for twice a week. And on average, last year in our pilot year, we improved reading proficiency by 4.2 reading levels with this program. So it's a very unique way for people to be able to volunteer as every company is doing more with less these days. And it's also a unique way for us to volunteer in the classrooms to help with that third grade reading proficiency. So our results last year were over 300 kids in Washington County. That's both school systems. We're supporting over 1,900 hours of volunteer support with 164 volunteers. You know, the statistics said 93% of teachers said that Velo really improved the reading proficiency in their students. We received the Governor's Volunteer Star Award earlier this year for our efforts with Velo. And then we've also received a lot of national recognition with this program. We are the only United Way in the southeast of the country to implement Velo. We are still the only one in the state of Tennessee. So this is a very unique program that we're really proud of. This year, we have actually expanded that and we're trying a couple of different models. So it is now implemented in 10 classrooms in Washington County schools, serving first through third grade students. Currently, it's in Fall Branch, Lamar, South Central, and Westview. And we also decided that you guys have this awesome pool of high school students who really want to be able to give back and mentor younger students in your school system. And they also need volunteer hours for their scholarships, right? So we connected with both high schools this year. And we have students that have adopted Fall Branch and South Central from the school closest to them. And so those students are able to volunteer during school hours, 30 minutes a week, to mentor an elementary school student near them and help with reading proficiency. It's teaching them responsibility, that somebody depends on them. We've actually seen that the students want to go to school because they want to be there for those elementary school students. And of course, elementary school students think it's awesome to have those students volunteer with them. We provide Velo parties twice a year so our volunteers can actually meet the students, which is what you saw on the footage. So for the high school students, they will be taking field trips once a year to the high school and then once a year to the elementary school for them to be able to hang with each other. Also, hopefully you all heard of the Snuggle Bear Invasion that we had back in September. Because of the national attention that we received from Velo, Snuggle, the fabric software company, reached out to us and said, you know, "We love the things you're doing in Tennessee. We're very impressed with what you're doing. And we have 5,000 Snuggle Bears. We'd really like to donate to you if you think you can use them." Well, coincidentally, between Johnson City and Washington County schools, we have just over 5,000 kindergarten through third graders. And so we decided to make those Snuggle Reading Bears. And so we told the children that they had to read them a story every single night and that they had to give them lots of Snuggles. And so we hand-delivered these Snuggle Bears throughout the month of September and did a kickoff at Jonesboro Elementary School, which is what you see there. And the kids, I still see these Snuggle Bears all over town. So the kids are still loving them. We're still getting pictures for parents with the children reading to them. Also, new this year, we actually launched a partnership with the NFL across the nation to implement the NFL Character Playbook. So this is a new program that is now available to your school system at no cost. It's innovative digital courses that use evidence-based strategies to educate students on how to cultivate and maintain healthy relationships, especially during those critical middle school years. So it's got six different modules and they cover key concepts around positive character development, social-emotional learning, and then building healthy relationships. We piloted this last year at Grand View in the middle school and it seemed to go really well. And we would love to have it implemented in all of your other middle school classrooms. And then hopefully you all have heard of the awesome program that Kelly Wagner helps run called the Fit for Success Program. That is a program for your school system that provides backpacks or clothing, hygiene items, school supplies, shoes, socks, any basic need that a child needs but doesn't otherwise have the resources for. So that is a program that a lot of your faculty members had no idea that we supported. They knew it existed, but they had no idea who supported it. And those are funds that come from United Way. So last year, in the 2018-2019 school year, the Fit for Success Program was able to help 871 students here in Washington County schools. Now, I know for some people, a simple pair of shoes or socks doesn't really make a significant difference in a child's life. But I've got this awesome story from one of your students at Westview Elementary School that I wanted to share. And of course, this is not the actual student, but this is her story. So again, that story came from a fifth grade student at Westview Elementary School. And although that was not her and that was not shot at the school, that is her story verbatim. And so what I tell people all the time is that the difference of a pair of shoes or a pair of socks or a pair of clothing can make in a child's life insignificant, because they don't have to worry about being made fun of. They don't have to worry, you know, about where their next meal's going to come from, if it's, you know, a backpack full of food. They can focus more on their education because we're there to provide those resources for them. So how can you all help make the difference? This past year, we will have invested about $60,000 in Washington County schools between all of the programs and donations that we do. As you all know, fundraising is getting tougher and tougher across the board. And so in order to continue to support your students or to support them even more, as we wish to do, we really need your help. We need your help raising funds for your school system. So I've got packets that I'm going to give out to each one of you today. And my request is that you share this information that I just shared with you about United Way to your friends, to your family, to your neighbors, to your local businesses, to coworkers, anybody in the community that will listen, and stress why it is so important for people to support United Way. Because in turn, we turn around and we support your school system. And we want to do more of that. So I'm going to hand out these packets for you. And my question is, will you live united with us and help make positive lasting change in our community? And as I hand these out, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Have you been to any of the PTA meetings at some of the schools?
We have not made our rounds to the PTA meetings yet.
Okay.
You all do great things in Washington County. Thank you very much. You're a great addition to the organization.
Thank you.
How many employer campaigns have you guys participated in? Or do your employers, member employers operate?
Yeah, so we work with about 200 different businesses within Washington County. Of course, some of those are on a much larger scale than others.
Well, the funding is actually coming from individuals to a large extent through either payroll deductions or outright contributions. Out of those couple of hundred, how many of those, you know, where they have an employee campaign, where they have an employee deduction, if you will, from the payroll? How many of them, how many employers maybe match to some extent what the employees contribute?
There are very few now that actually match. So I would say probably less than 10% will actually match those contributions. And we've seen that change, you know, over the years as far as who would match. Now, a lot of companies will give us corporate donations. We are seeing with corporate donations is they want it to go to very specific things like our Velo program or our new Alice initiatives that we're launching. And we're actually receiving a lot of grant funding. So far, Velo has been strictly grant-funded. But no, we would love to see more people match those donations. We would love to see more companies run campaigns. And we would love to see more individuals donate. So that's what we ask of you all, is to help us spread the word so that people can be more educated on the new things we are doing and the impact we really are making. Any questions?
The Crockett adopted South Central, Velo program, but the Crockett students and the South Central students have never met?
No, they will meet next week for the first time on Thursday. Yes, they will. South Central is actually taking a field trip to David Crockett High School. And so we provide snacks and a free book for all of the, it didn't matter, for all of the students. And that'll be the first time that they meet. So we're excited for that to happen. And we would love to invite you all to attend next week as well if you'd like to see that happen. It's Thursday. Yep, from 8:30 to 10:30 at David Crockett High School.
And you can do that remotely?
You can do it remotely. You can actually do it from your cell phone. So there's absolutely no excuse why somebody cannot volunteer. There's no commute time. It's literally 30 minutes a week. It offers flexibility. So there is a calendar that the teachers will post, so the reading times for the students. And so for like me, the same day and time every week doesn't work because I'm all over the place. So I'll go into that calendar and see what's open on my calendar. And I may volunteer a Tuesday at 9:00 a.m. one week, and it may be Thursday at 2:00 o'clock another week. So it offers flexibility, but it also offers, you know, the fact you don't have to commute and you can do it from your office or at home or your cell phone. I've done it in-between meetings in my car, you know, to make sure that I read with those students. It's a pretty amazing program. We've been amazed at how much these students really share with you and how you actually really get to know them, even though you haven't met them in person, so.
Can you talk, just expand a little bit on the NFL Character Playbook initiative that you brought up?
Yeah, so the NFL Character Playbook is essentially a social-emotional, building-healthy relationship type program. It's kind of an anti-bullying. It's targeted really fifth through eighth grade. And it's, again, through our partnership with the NFL, it's provided to your middle schools at absolutely no cost. It's all online modules, so it can be done very flexibly, you know, flexible with your teacher's curriculum. It's not something that's super time-intensive, but it's something that the teachers could then expand upon, you know, as they go through those modules with each of their classes. But it's really just around being better people, being, you know, a good character, regardless of what you may be facing at home or what you may face at school, and trying to build healthier relationships and be supportive of others.
We were all in Nashville last month. And one of the programs that was highlighted, I guess, is the partner program, the Character Playbook, NFL's Inside Out program. So, you know, I see this as kind of a building block to that next level, maybe.
Yeah, so like I said, we piloted it at Grand View last year and it seemed to work really well. I think they utilized it during the TCAP time. So as they had students that, you know, they had breaks and they were done with TCAPs, at the end of the school year, they could use that time to do their modules. So we would love to have it implemented in all of your middle schools. And again, it's absolutely free. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you all for what you do.
Board members, you have a new drop box of contract from West Hills Tractor in Jonesboro. They will, if the board accepts this contract, place an agricultural tractor at both high schools, produced by the agricultural departments exclusively. I think it's a dollar a year or some minimal amount. And after a year's time, they'll swap it out for another and sell the current one at a used price from their dealership. Mr. Chairman, recommend, please.
Okay, I have a lead for approval. I have a second. Any more discussion?
Thank you to the Foster family.
Very generous. I have a comment, but I'm going to keep it to myself, so.
Green.
It's not green enough, that's right. Roll call, Leonard, please.
Mr. Flannery.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Flannery.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Ganger.
Ah.
Mr. Meredith.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yep.
Mr. Hammond.
Yes.
Ms. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Ah, and I will say that I went to school with the Fosters and they're good people. And they wore a blue hat and I wore a green hat when we went to school, so.
Board members, I'm not sure I need to introduce the gentlemacy to my right, but Cade Larkins is a student board member that's on duty this week, David Crockett High School senior. I think there's 104 days of school left in your entire high school career, so he'll bring to the, we got a wonderful presentation, Lucy.
Okay, so I've been talking about some of the things that happened this past month in Washington County. Everybody enjoyed a great Thanksgiving break. Everybody's trying to wrap up their grades, get everything locked in before Christmas, There was literacy night at one of the elementary schools and it was a great time. Everybody got to meet each other. There was food, drinks, and it was a great family night. At the Ardis Classic is the first edition of the Girls in Two, the Ardis Classic, so they had their own bracket this year. I think Boone finished third in the boys division. They didn't play in the girls division, but Crockett Girls played second. And I think this is Crockett's first time winning Ardis Classic in five years, so it's good. The All-Conference for Football was recently released. As far as how many players were selected or mentioned, I think Darren Boone and David Crockett were pretty well represented in how many players were selected. And we had a defensive, Crockett had the Defensive Player of the Year in Principality, Two Boone baseball players signed to continue their athletic careers at the next level. They're both pitchers, one's Ryan Haney and one's Kate Elliott. And I forgot to add this, but two David Crockett volleyball players also signed to play at Walter State, so. I saw later on the school website, but Grand View, I think Fall Branch and Ridgeview did as well. They honored the veterans on Veterans Day and I think they had a performance forum. They had a bed of a mill. It was a parade, so it's great to see that. That's about all I have.
Under other, we do have a need for just a little bit of roundtable. A meeting or two ago, the board asked your attorney Scott Bennett to prepare a request or proposal from prospective efficiency firms to do a study of Washington County schools. This is something of a snag. Scott Bennett would like to know what it is you mean by efficiency. So, floor is yours.
Yeah, simply put, I was in such a rush to help you, I didn't ask really how I was supposed to help you. When we're looking at efficiencies, we can look at a host of different areas. And as I was asking the administration, okay, what is it that y'all have been thinking about? I'm not sure that the administration necessarily knows exactly what it is that we need to focus on. So we could look at efficient operations in the context of, is it time to explore outsourcing certain services? I understand that the board has previously looked at the cost of outsourcing transportation. What about custodial? I understand that you outsource custodial services in some of your schools, but not all of your schools. It would seem to make sense that if it's cost-effective to do the one or the other, that you would do the one or the other every week. Likewise, I think some folks have wondered whether you need to do a salary study here in the central office, which is a completely different type of efficiency study. And then there's the question about facilities management. Are you talking about whether you need to consolidate schools and transportation routes? So I foolishly assumed that there was a consensus about what we were talking about when we said efficiency study. And then the more questions I asked, the more I realized that this was an expanding conversation. And so rather than I run into a particular direction and inadvertently establish policy for you, I just thought I'd ask y'all, what is it you want me to explore for you? And I don't need to, you don't have to tell me, you have to have a vote, just some ideas so I can start guiding you in the right directions.
All that sounds good.
Why don't we, I don't want to cement your role as the chairman of the efficiency committee. So some easy things to start with that has data already in front of you. There is a way to start looking at efficiency through personnel costs at the central office. The state keeps track of those numbers. And without a whole lot of effort, well, I shouldn't say that because I haven't done this in years, that number is knowable. So with Dr. Kiernan, I'm sure we could compare the cost of operating your central office to other similarly sized LEAs. Now, the thing is, that doesn't tell you whether the people you're paying are being efficient, right? All that's doing is it's comparing cost. And you've got to understand that cost is different from efficiency, right? Theoretically, you could be very cost-efficient if you told Dr. Flannery, "You know what you've got to do, get it done," and you're doing it by yourself. It wouldn't be very effective because, you know, he couldn't get it all done. So biting the elephant slowly, I think I can, without doing any kind of RFPs, I can get you some numbers about that. And if Mr. Hale will work with me, I'll be happy to try to come up with some numbers about the cost analysis about custodial at your respective schools and then go back and look at whether it's costing you to run your transportation business as compared to other LEAs or size. And I can start with that without having to put out an RFP. That'll give you at least something to chew on, if that's the pleasure of the board.
Scott, would it be appropriate if the board would pull this over and email you as individuals?
Absolutely, absolutely. And, you know, evidently, I've made this my second residence, so, you know, I could come up for a, you know, work session and we can just, you know, roundtable this and kick it around on what do you think? I don't think I'm going to have, because of, you know, I assume that Mr. Hale is going to take some time off during winter break. I'm probably not going to have anything for y'all by January, but I'll put the Spurs to it because nobody sees this around the corner. You agree with that?
I did see student board member Mallory McClellan slip in. And other than that, looking forward to dinner at 7:30 and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
It's 5:43, so we got to hurry. Appointment of the Design Committee for Jonesboro School.
Mr. Chairman, I just happen to have the copies of that part of the interlocal agreement, just for your information.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
It's my understanding that this is to be a principal or a teacher, and I would like to nominate Jan Allen, who's a teacher, an art teacher at Jonesboro Elementary. She's taught in several other elementary schools, so she's certainly familiar with the good things and so forth about the schools that we handle. And I think she would be an excellent addition to this designs committee.
Okay.
I have a second.
You have a second? We taking nominations? That we're discussing. Okay. So.
Why are we nominating somebody?
They asked us to.
Why are we nominating somebody?
All I know is the appointment of the Design Committee of Town Jonesboro.
And the Design Committee consists of what?
It's number one.
Yeah, I know, well. Well, I've just got this too. So I think let's take a minute and read this and then we'll.
Wasn't this in the original booklet that we got?
Yes.
Yes, sir, it was. Thank you.
We've had this in hand since the 7th of November.
That's right.
Take just a minute and everybody read it again.
So we've got three members of the board that are already, that are already appointed, correct?
Yeah, which is the three from the Jonesboro district. And now we have to take the appointment of this, another.
I wasn't aware we were going to do that. I don't know if I missed something or whatever, but I didn't realize we were appointing, this board was going to appoint somebody.
All I know is what this says here.
Yeah, I thought the Town of Jonesboro was appointing, or the mayor or whoever was doing this. Well, not us as a board, so that's new to me.
So, I mean, I'm just reading what I'm reading here.
The town has its own, the town has its own representatives to the committee. I can't remember how many total, I'm sorry, I can't remember how many total members are on the committee now, but there are four that come from the school system. Three board members and one educator. The Town of Jonesboro gets a certain number of appointments, including some at-large appointments. The county gets some appointments, but you get four.
I believe the town is, I'm sorry.
Well, I was going to say, this thing's changed how many times?
This is correct.
That part really hasn't changed since August when we ratified it, that part of it. Now, the duties of the Design Committee, yes, that's changed, but since August when we ratified, we've had three board members and one educator.
I believe the Town of Jonesboro was going to select a parent, the Jonesboro parent, but that's their responsibility. But we were to select an educator or a principal.
I guess that'd be my question, why wouldn't we have a principal? But Mr. Collins or Mr. McKee on the committee?
Mr. Flannery.
Are you taking nominations at this time?
I can't. I have a motion in a second.
I'd like to make another nomination.
I don't, I can accept that, can't I?
No. Do you have your motion?
Let me ask. Wait, 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 wait. If you have, if you're taking nominations, that's not a, that's not a motion. Nominations are, let's name somebody and then someone has to call for nominations to cease. I heard, I heard a call for nominations. And I heard Mr. McLean nominate somebody. So in my understanding, pardon me, your nominations are still open until they're closed.
Okay.
Did he disclose nominations?
He made a motion to.
But then he asked for nominations? Would the principals automatically be there? No. Well, I mean, a part of this design as far as being contacted? I mean, I would think they would have some insight.
Well, you would think, you would think the Washington County School Board would have a big insight on it, but now.
Oh, yeah, we got four people.
I had actually texted Ms. Allen to ask her if she would be interested in this, based on her years of service to the system, based on the fact that she's at the Jonesboro Elementary School, based on the fact that she's, based on all that I've been told, an outstanding art teacher. And my opinion was it'd be good to get somebody, as I refer to the teachers, somebody from the trenches to have some input on this kind of a program. And I just think it would be outstanding for us to, to put a teacher in there, I really do. I don't know how much, the way this thing is coming together, I have no idea how much the design committee is really going to get to be effective on this anyway. Because the majority of things are going to be coming from the architect. Any of us that have been through this, Dave Crockett, Daniel Boone, we know that the majority of these things are going to come from the architect's office, okay? The design committee will certainly review these and discuss them and so forth. But I just think it would be good for us to, to put somebody from the trenches in there.
Chad.
Well, I don't doubt Ms. Allen would be a great asset to that design committee. Although I do think we have two outstanding principals at both those schools. And I would like to nominate Mr. Combs. And for the one reason is, is because of the middle school sports that are going on at the schools. I know they work really well together. I know they do a great job together. And I know they could lean on each other. But I was thinking if the meetings were during the day, that they would be more apt to be able to leave where, you know, Ms. Allen has a class and other obligations she has to keep up with. So, I'd like to nominate Mr. Combs if I could, please.
When this first started, I was under the impression principals were going to be consulted in this manner and would have a say, like when the design committee would discuss things, the principals would be welcome, that's one of the reasons I, to put their input in. So, I would hope that would continue regardless if one principal is appointed and others not.
I think that's how we assure they're a part of it, by having one on the committee. That way, we know they're a part of it.
I mean, it was, as it was presented to me, I was, and the same, even though they may appoint a parent, there's discussion, they may have some town hall meetings to discuss input on this design. Now, that's, I mean, I'm not, I don't want to hurt anybody's mouth, but that's what it's presented to me.
And I know, and in what you're saying, you're not sure if they're going to be or not. So, my point is, now we're sure if we put them on this committee, you know, we know.
But I was also told teachers would be too, so.
Yeah, I mean, and I understand what you're saying, and I mean, we don't know what, how it's going to play out. And, you know, and I'll, I'll say, you know, thanks comments, yes, I believe having someone in the trenches is a good idea. And Mr. Combs and Mr. McKee have both been there. And now they've run the whole school, so they have a very good insight of what needs to be done or what maybe they would like to see in a new school, so.
Mr. Chairman, one question to the attorney. Is this part of the contract, the number of people on the committee?
It's part of the interlocal agreement that we, that we executed, that all of the entities have executed. And let me, just add, this adds any kind of clarity. A facilities maintenance staff member will also serve as a staff member to the design committee. So, he or she won't be on the committee itself, but will have input. I realize that's not the same thing as administrator, but, but it's another voice.
An important one, since I have to maintain whatever is designed.
And I don't, I don't know what y'all have, but, but the language reads, "The Board of Education will provide four persons to serve as members of the design committee, including three members of the board who serve the district in which the Jonesboro schools are currently situated, and an administrator or teacher from the Jonesboro schools." Additionally, the Board of Education will have a representative from their facilities maintenance staff to serve as a staff member to the design committee.
And that would be Mr. Patrick Combs?
That's not, that's not in there. If that's who you want.
That's, that's the discretion of the board.
So, we have to choose somebody for that also?
Yes.
I don't think you need to, you, I don't think that's a have to right now. And, and I would even suggest that that's something that you could legitimately delegate to your director. But I think the design committee is your voice. I think you do need to select that person.
Mr. Bennett, this person would not replace the director. I mean, the director will be on this committee as well, would you not?
No, he's not going to be on there.
No, but he can certainly, the meetings will be public, open to the public. He and everybody else on this board can attend the meetings, as I understand it.
That's correct. We, we had some discussion about whether he should be an official member. And, and in, in practice, he's going to be too busy to, to contribute meaningfully to the discussions, which is why we settled on that language, that, that a member of the facilities maintenance staff would serve as a staff member to the design committee.
And I realize he's busy, and I'm not trying to add to his plate, but they would confer with the director, assuming this committee.
Absolutely. They would be foolish not to.
And the design, as I've read, will come back to the board for its approval?
Yes, sir. Twice, in fact. So, the, so the first set of plans come back to the, to the board and to the county. And please forgive me, I don't have that document in front of me, but to the town, to the boards of the county, you review and comment. It goes back to the town to respond and alter the plans. It comes back to you and the county again to review and comment. And you can either accept or object. Now, practically speaking, at that point, the town can either revise the documents again or not. What they're going to do is, at that point, they will have invested so much money into it, they're going to revise the documents if, if there's a legitimate issue. So, it's not as if Dr. Flannery will not have some input into this.
In the interest of town, I move the nomination ceased. You've got two nominated, or I've got two nominated?
We got a motion. And that's, that's different. The chairman accepted a motion and got a second.
Well, I would ask that you withdraw your motion.
I withdraw my motion. You withdraw your second. So, now, I've got two people. So, I nominate.
If I can recommend, I believe you should open the floor for nominations.
All right, I open the floor for nominations. I nominate Ms. Jan Allen, art teacher from Jonesboro Elementary School. Mr. Flannery.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Combs, administrator at Jonesboro Elementary School.
Okay. I move that nomination ceased.
I second that.
Okay.
Well, he didn't have a second yet on this.
Right, excuse me.
Oh, you don't have to say, okay, my apologies, my fault.
Clyde.
If, if, I'm just curious, I don't know Ms. Allen, I know Mr. Combs is Ms. Allen here.
Trying to figure out how I want to.
You have to vote on the motion to cease nominations.
Okay, but I need, I want to vote on either one of them.
Roll call vote?
Yeah, you have to.
Do I have to do roll call vote, Scott, or can I put it on a piece of paper?
You should do it like you do for the superintendent. You need to write down names and turn them.
Well, that's, it, it, so first of all, you've got to, to vote on the motion to close the nominations.
Okay.
After that, I recommend you do a roll call vote. And each board member audibly casts the vote. You can write things down, but then guess what? I've got to read it because state law requires it to be.
It has to be. Okay, all right.
So, you may as well just go ahead.
Well, I mean, that's fine, I just wanted to know how to go about it, so.
We need to go to a vote on the motion.
All right, I need a, a roll call vote on the motion that nomination ceased.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Dallinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flanner?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Buchanan?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Ganger?
All right.
Mr. Meredith?
Please.
Mr. Irvin?
Ah. Okay, now, uh, what we going to do now? Roll call vote on, just say the person's name?
Yes.
Okay, if you want to be the, on the committee.
Mr. Hammond?
I'm just, I'll vote Jan Allen, but I was under the impression that the director and two principals were going to be a part of this, very much so. And that's what I was told up front, for the record.
Ms. Dallinger?
Jan Allen.
Flanner?
Mr. Combs?
Buchanan?
Ms. Allen?
Mr. McLean?
Ms. Allen?
Mr. Ganger?
Mr. Combs?
Mr. Meredith?
Mr. Combs?
Mr. Day?
Mr. Combs?
Mr. Irvin?
What I was afraid was going to happen. No disrespect, Mr. Combs, but I'm going to pick Ms. Allen, okay? No disrespect, so. You're our principal. Now, my biggest issue right now is, Scott, I, I want, I want my principals involved.
Not me.
I want both my principals. Now, boys, you know, we're sitting here, usually we didn't, we don't have to do this, okay?
I miss a new day, I mean, new.
Oh, I, no.
And I, we're just expecting our design committee is the only ones that are going to have voices. Now, people in the crowd, just like we're having our meeting right now, them people up there, they can't speak unless it's open to public comment.
You just.
That's the way that, that's the way the design committee could be too. You don't know, nobody does.
You just heard him say that whatever the design committee does, will come back to this board twice. You just heard him say that.
That doesn't mean anybody on the crowd gets a chance to speak.
That's up to the chairman of the design committee.
Excuse me, the three of us that represent can go to people and ask.
Right, but I mean, I'm just saying, the people, the audience may not be able to, everybody's saying, well, I'd like for an administrator to be the one to speak. But we're not, we're not sure that they'll have that opportunity unless you go to them.
Well, you know, my argument is, if anybody needs to speak, it needs to be this board.
Well.
I'd say we voted.
Move on.
Move on.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm not moving on. I want to discuss this a little bit more because I care about this. This is, this is something that I've wanted to make sure that has been, we have a voice.
But I think the only thing we just did is, the only person we have now is the facilities maintenance staff representative that Dr. Flannery or, Dr. Flannery will appoint.
It's not been said. I mean, if the board chooses to turn that over, I'm going to do it, and they felt the fact.
Well, but Mr. Chairman, I mean, would that, it does say that the board, I mean, will appoint, additionally, the Board of Education will have a representative from their facilities maintenance staff. So, it does, it does put that onus on the board. Now, the board could.
Exactly.
Give that to Dr. Flannery.
You could delegate.
Or the board could exercise it.
But you don't have to.
But in, in my, my hope would be that Mr. Patrick and you would come up with the, uh, uh, the best person to serve on that as it relates to this school system. And that name would come forward and the board, so that's who we want.
Well, I'll throw my two cents worth in. I think Philip Patrick needs to be the one.
I would agree that the maintenance supervisor would be the one. If that's, because it's going to be over the school for maintenance-wise.
Pretty much failed out already.
You good with that? Yes, that's what you said there.
It's a motion, yeah.
I make that in the form of a motion that we put Philip Patrick on this, on this committee.
Well, do we need to accept? I mean, does anybody else?
I made a motion. I need a second.
Second.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I thought we were going to let the director do.
Well, he just said he wanted Philip Patrick.
True?
Yes. Okay, but he, isn't he to appoint him since, or does the board have to make that?
The, the interlocal agreement says representative. And how the board selects representatives totally up to y'all. You could either do it yourself, but recognizing that that's really an administrative function, you could delegate it to the superintendent. Your superintendent has said who he would appoint, so, sir, you know, six versus one half dozen.
See, I got a different approach on all this. I think this, I think the mayor of Jonesboro and the alderman have brought all the groups together. And I did know there's a design committee, but I would hope there's times that they would have to go to Dr. Myers for special ed. Or they might have to go to Dr. Kite for the elementary part, or that they would have to go to the school director for issues. Or that they would go to teachers and that the principals would automatically have an input. And I hope we continue that, working together and not get caught up on who's serving on the committee. Because at the end of the day, we have all these committees for the school board, but the committees are only as good as the school board votes, as the board is together. So, I don't want us to get caught up in, in details. I would hope that Mr. Combs would have a seat at the table when they're coming to a certain issue. I would hope Mr. McKee would. And if they wanted, if, if there's time for parents to comment. And, and maybe go to their board members or go to their aldermen or community meetings. It's, let's keep the united approach going.
I, I think that's, I think that admonitions wise, and I think that there's a vehicle baked into the interlocal agreement where you can do that. Either your three board members can have a committee meeting, you can call the meeting, where the three of you listen to public comments and, and take that and, and take it back to the design committee. Or you four now can use your voice on the design committee, which, which by, by contract is going to be subject to the open records and open meetings laws. And you can have a public comment portion for the design committee meetings. I think there's a vehicle in place to do it. And I think it would be proven to, to tap into the wisdom of your administrators and, and other people. I, I, I think your admonition is very wise, Mr. Hammond. I don't think that this has to be, you know, a closed group of people. And, you know, six months from now, surprise, here are the plans. I think that would, that would be doomed to fail.
Not, Mr. Chairman. My experience with multi-million dollar construction projects, and I've been involved in several, back when I was with Ballot or former Mountain State Helblines. I think, and all due respect to Dr. Flannery, but I think it's mission critical for us to have somebody from the facility staff providing input to this, this design. We're the body that's going to have to pay for the operation of the facility. Yeah, the county's going to pay for the school itself. And you can, you can build it and design it one way, you know, it could cost you a lot of money in operations. Or you can design it a little differently and save a lot of money in operations. And I think that, that our maintenance staff would be critical to providing that, that support.
That's what.
I agree with that.
I agree.
You're saying like we're against the special ed. Let's have Ms. Myers at the table.
Town of Jonesboro is not built to scale.
Without a doubt.
You know what? The town of Jonesboro.
I don't see them having to attend every meeting. But people want their input, including.
Maybe he's already met with the architect once, or Carla has, you know.
That's what I was going to say. Has the architect already been meeting with some of our people?
Multiple meetings.
So, I didn't know that.
And I've even, like, I've, I've had parents reach out to me, but now that's not us to pick, but they need a seat at the table too.
I believe they do.
Yeah.
Well, if it comes in over $32,750,000, it's done anyway. Way it is. Okay, I have a motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Dallinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flanner?
Uh, I'm sorry, is this is for the nomination of Patrick? Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Mr. Buchanan?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Ganger?
All right.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Ms. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Okay. Broker realtor auction company, sir. I guess it's you, because I ain't never seen you here before.
I forgot why I was here. It's been pretty.
Charlie looks like Clarence May.
Well, my name's Brian Sange. I'm with the brokers, realty and auction. We submitted a proposal to you guys when you're requesting services to help with marketing and selling your property at Elbow and Street Middle School. And so, we saw that opportunity and thought that's something we wanted to try and get approved through you all to help you do that. And so we saw that opportunity and thought that's something we wanted to try and get approved through you all to help you do that. We've been in the brokerage business for, the brokers has been in existence for seven or eight years, and my partner, Joe Wilson, um, he's been forty-plus years in real estate. And, uh, yeah, unfortunately, he couldn't be here, but, so I, I'm here, and I'm happy to be here, so. We love that opportunity, and if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them, or try to at least.
Board, do you all have any questions? From the man?
Well, um, I do. On the, what we were shared in our drop box was not, it didn't have any numbers. It just kinda had, um, is there any, or have we, I don't know, have we seen something?
Received it earlier.
Earlier, so it wasn't this week, it was some, alright, I'm sorry.
Lifting agreement.
I think that, uh.
Can you refresh us on some numbers?
Sure, sure, we'd be happy to. I think in the appraisal that was done by Rex Garrison, is that correct? Rex Garrison? I think he recommended, um, a number of different options or ideas, and it came out to a total sales price of around one point seven, seven. And, uh, he had broken it up in two different sections, the first, front six acres, and he saw that as being the most valuable. Even without the school on it, he saw that as being even more valuable, from what I can tell. Don't think that I would recommend any of us going down the road to try to demolish the school, but, and then sell it, but I think that, I think there is value with it there. There, there may be an option, many options for different developers to come in and say how they could use that school, potentially put on a number of different ideas. Or you might just have someone come in and say, I want to demolish it. Let's tear it down, let's build some retail project on the front, maybe do some multifamily on the back, maybe do some residential on the back. But that's what developers are so good at, is just us and our job to help find who that developer would be to come in and, uh, and transform that property. It could be a huge benefit for Washington County, uh, help in a number of ways. I think the tax, taxes off of it, and then the sales price would both benefit and benefit the people around that area if we can help you get it sold.
Quick, going back to your all's October fifteenth letter to Dr. Karenin, you referenced some other schools that you've actually, that you all actually marketed and sold, and sold in county. In looking at those, which one would you say probably most closely resembled the Boone Street property? Now, of course, none of them were in a retail spot.
Probably none of them really, I mean, it, I didn't have anything to do with those sales. Our company did, another person in our company had something to do with them. It actually got to the point where they wanted to auction them off and sell them. But it was just kinda showing, hey, this is something they have done, they have worked with other school board and put that together, so. They did. I wouldn't, you know, those are accomplishments, they're just, they're just a select of a couple that, you know, that the brokers has been successful with.
You, you know, without, you know, tipping your hand too much, 'cause we do have the press here, and I know that you all have some ideas.
Know the press is here, now you made me nervous.
You know, how, I mean, what, I mean, what can you say is what you see is the best use out there? And what would y'all envision this thing morphing into?
I don't.
Who would be the, who would be the, who would be potential purchasers, maybe?
Well, a developer would be, would be the purchaser, I would think, that, you know, most retail large boxes have to prefer developers, so we'd have to attract a developer to come in that works with the retail box, that could maybe go on there, maybe. I mean, we've got three grocery stores over there, it's hard to say that we need another one right there. I don't think we do, but it's potential, you never know, I mean, but.
You think there's any reuse from the school?
Potentially, yes. I, you know, maybe a senior living can be turned into, into, that school can be turned into a senior living or multifamily. It could be some sort of a high-end use, I could see it. I mean, that's what we had wanted to be, if they're gonna go that route, 'cause that's gonna bring them more dollars. So, potentially medical, might have to be torn down, build something back, but I know that some medical users are growing right now. And, and that's a great location, so.
Is the property worth more with the building or without the building? No, I'm asking his opinion.
My opinion?
Your opinion, what is it?
The way it stands today, if I was the owner of the property, I, I see it as being an asset until it's not. I mean, at this point, it's an asset, and if someone comes in and wants to do something else with it, then maybe it's a liability at that point. But I don't see it as being a liability at this point.
Are you saying that the price that we potentially could sell it depends on who's buying it, whether they want the building or not want the building?
I'm not saying what, I'm saying that with the listing price we recommend, we start at two million dollars, and we negotiate from there, and now.
So if I was wanting to buy it, and that's what you told me, and I said, you know, I wanna buy it, but I don't want the building, I'm gonna tear it down?
That, that would come in to their offer, they could say, hey, look, it's gonna cost me according to the appraisal, three hundred eighty thousand, tear it down. And if, if it's gonna cost me three eighty, and you're asking, it's all a negotiation at that point.
I'm sorry, I, I've tried to find, is there a start and an end date that we decide to go with? Like tonight, we vote tonight?
There, there is.
What is, how many months?
It's twelve months, which, and, you know, I know a lot of people would like to say, why did you like to see that sell faster? But I'd say if we put it under, under contract tomorrow, it would take us at minimum six months to get it closed. Now, there's just, there's just so many variations. I, I don't know the exact, um, average of what it takes to close a commercial property, but I'm just gonna ballpark it based on my experience, I'd say a hundred and fifty days on average. You might sell something in sixty, you might sell something in a year and a half, so it kinda averages out.
Do you think it'd be worth anything to, if we wanted to price it higher? I mean, it's all negotiable, I understand that, know how that works. But do you think that we'd be, I don't see how you can appraise that value unless it was just naked bare land. With it having a school owner, it's hard to appraise, 'cause, I mean, the ones in Sullivan County, I know something, they give some of those away. I mean, and we being afforded to give this away. I mean, it's in a good location, some of the other ones were in bad loc, or not a bad location, it was for that time of day, but we've got a, a real good location right there on Thirty-Sixth. So, do you think that would be, tell me the cons and pros on that, if we wanted to list it for, say, three and a half?
It just depends on how bad you wanna sell it. If you don't wanna sell it quickly, we could start it really high, and I hope somebody would come in and pay something, 'cause they just really had to have it. My opinion, the appraisal, I thought it gave it a good justification for what the property is worth. So, you could ask more, everyone can always ask more, but the expectations in my mind change at that point.
Do you think it'd be a turnoff then, to sell?
Well, nobody knows it's for sale now, because there's no side out there.
I mean, yeah, we're, this is the only real, and, and we're going by your marketing and stuff like that. I mean, the, we don't know who's out there interested, you know, at the moment.
Well, I mean, it, could it be worth three and a half million dollars? It could, if, but I would say that there's a lot of work that would need to be done to that property to turn it into that. Because the frontage, I believe there's about six hundred seventy feet of frontage. But you, but you gotta go up a hill, and then you're flat in order to get to that, in the most desirable area. If it was all a little bit closer to road level, then I could see it being worth a little bit more, kind of the prices that you're talking, but. Just based on the lay of the land, the location, um, the road frontage, the depth that it goes back into it, I just, I just try to be realistic with who, no matter who it is I'm working with. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend going up that, to that level price, I just don't think it's beneficial.
If it gets more than a hundred and seventy-four, seventy-five thousand an acre, I mean, you know, the discount for building, and then, I mean, if we've got, what, eleven and a half acres out there, then we've got, it's getting too many dollars, we'll put you at a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars an acre.
Right. And the frontage is gonna be worth more in the.
Yeah.
Right, right, that's about it, all right.
So the solar price is up from there? We sold centrally in the back part, we sold centrally in the back part, will it be divided?
I, I would recommend us going and putting, selling it, putting on the market separately. But if someone came to you and said they'd be interested in buying the front or the back, it might be something you'd consider, depending on what kind of offer they make.
You know, I'm kinda, I'm kinda with Chad, though, you never negotiate that.
I mean, that's, that's what I'm saying, we've got one chance to put, to start. And, you know, these nine people here, of course. It's cool, you know what I'm saying, I mean.
Well, I can tell you.
Everybody come to get here.
Something else, I don't know, I'm sorry, I can't find your original contract on here.
I have one with you, would like it.
I would like to see it, yes, please. What is your design commission, is it a standard?
It's a sta, well, it's actually a little less than the standard, what we pressed to you guys, and, uh. It's five percent.
Are there, Mr. Sanz, are there any marketing costs that we would be involved in funding? I mean, are there any costs that you would see the board of education being responsible for, other than just the maintenance of the property and that, you know, keeping the grass cut and stuff like that?
No, not with much of a marketing.
I have a question for, I guess, Dr. Flannery or Dr. Karenin. I appreciate your interest. I'm concerned that we only had one company come back. So I guess my question to you all is, where did we advertise this? And is it possible to cast a bigger net on that? Advertising for the area like across the state? I don't remember we advertised to begin with.
Dr. Karenin is prepared to answer.
Our advertisement that went to the Johnson City Press goes to the Elizabethan Star, Ringo, uh, Herald Tribune, and the Kingsport Times. That's, that's across the board every time we put an ad in their paper. The, uh, the RFP was on the website, and we mailed to five local brokers that, when we did a little bit of research, they were on commercial properties. So we mailed to five and received one.
Is it, is it possible at this time to, to back up and cast a bigger net?
Well, how is that fair to the brokers that, that, I mean, they did their due diligence, I agree.
They did, I need a comparison, I need a comparison.
I want to say this, okay? I feel like that we need to have, we, we gotta have a, a call board meeting anyway. And I feel like this board needs to come together on this, on a price, okay? We, we, all nine of us does not have a price. I mean, we all got different prices, that what we need to price this school at. So I feel like we needed to have a workshop or discuss in January, and discuss a price that we're gonna price it at, whether it sells the next day, or it, we set on it for a little while. You can price something and always go down, you can't never go up, which you know that, right? So. Huh?
I'll share it with you.
Anyway, that's, that's my opinion. I think we, we do not have a price that we can tell this man that we're gonna sell it at. He has an appraisal, that's him. So, if you all are in favor of that, and what Mr. McLean is saying, you know, I, he's the only one, I agree. He's the only one that's.
I mean, it was open to everybody.
Yeah, well, I agree.
I thought the same thing, I was disgusted that we only had one. But this, this man give his time and effort to go and do his homework, and you did, and I appreciate you. And that to me is worth something, nobody else, I mean, sales times are good right now, I guess that's the reason.
Well, we don't know what we're gonna sell it at.
Right.
And who's to say we won't still go with?
I'll try to do our best to give unbiased opinion. I think you got one of the top brokerage companies you can get. I'm kinda being facetious at the same time, but I'm telling you, I believe you, you are doing well. I think that, um, our company is probably among the top two or three commercial sales in Johnson City, and the Tri-Cities, and, and volumes that we do. So, a lot of the things that we do is not announced, you know, you'll see it everywhere that we're doing some things that we do, we don't, so. But anyways, I, I think, I'm confident in our company and what we do, and I think that we will serve you all well.
I don't have any reason not to be comfortable with your company, okay? But what I'm saying is, it just, it didn't, I'm not disgusted, as he said, I'm disappointed that we only had one company come back with a project that potentially has this much income back to the system. I'm just disappointed that we didn't have more interest coming back. And I don't understand that, I really don't understand that.
Jason?
I just will say, I, I'll stand out a little bit, but, uh, I will say this, you need a local company to sell a local property. Somebody in Memphis, Knoxville, Nashville, you don't need an out-of-state company. Somebody local will buy this property and they'll develop it, that's all I'm gonna say.
I'm tired of hanging out for this property. You're costing us a lot.
Well, if you priced it three million dollars, you might as well be.
And I thought that's what we planned on, heard last month, 'cause it's costing us money.
That, that's me, I'm, I'm tired of us having to pay for this property and, and.
I, I agree, we need, I think we need to get it listed and move on, but I, I will go back to, um, Chairman Irwin's comment about what have we agreed to sell it for. Now, they, they provided us a listing agreement that's tagged two million dollars. You know, I don't know, what do you do, go around the table and say, what's your number, and then take an average of them? But, I mean, somehow you do have to come to a number. I don't know how we do that, but.
Can we wait a month and then decide?
Well, that's what I was wanting to do, 'cause we gotta have a workshop, I mean, a meeting, and.
Regardless of whether we wait there or not, we gotta let, I feel like them know that there are people.
Okay, all right, I mean, I don't have a problem.
And you set the price later.
Yes.
We'll set the price next month, next month.
So I make a motion that we accept brokers' realty and auction as our, uh, agent, thank you.
Without a price.
But not, not executing this listing agreement, 'cause it has a dollar.
That is correct, we'll have a workshop like you, Mr. Chairman's saying.
Okay, second definitely. I have a motion in a second, any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Flaner?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Buchanan?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
No.
Mr. Dangere? Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Uh, I wanna abstain.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Dallinger?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Mr. Chairman, I would ask this, you just worked with Mr. Sanz or somebody on the date, so he can be there to, uh, for the meeting?
Oh, Mr. Bent says I need to explain why, 'cause I, I have other relations with Mr. Wilson, so I didn't feel like it's fair for me to have input.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, appreciate you.
Thank you. Committee reports, bid review.
All right, should have the report in your drop box from yesterday, does everybody have a chance to read that? If so, I'm gonna put this report in the form of a motion that we accepted.
Second. Okay, I have a motion in a second on the report.
Yes, ma'am, please.
All those in favor of the report, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, okay.
This committee recommends award the purchase of the partial replacement of the fire alarm system components at Grandview School to CES Corporation Knoxville, Tennessee, on total submitted bid of nineteen thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars. Put that in the form of a motion, sir.
Second, sir. Got a second, discussion?
This will take care of the noise, right?
It'll take care of the noise, but it won't fix the system. It'll, it will take care of the noise, but it will not completely repair the system at Grandview. It's a much, much larger. It's a much, much larger, um, project and it's being engineered right now.
Okay.
Well, I, I'm, then I've got a completely different thinking then, because last night I thought during the bid review is, and Dr. Kieran may be able to help me, maybe I just misunderstood, but this is going to fix the nuisance alarms and fix the alarms that are the sensors that are bad. The other sensors aren't bad yet, is what I was under.
You're correct, but there are other repairs and renovations that need to be done.
That brings a warning.
You emphasized that no children are endangered, that all of our alarm systems are completely functional. They're just driving the administration nuts down there.
And this will fix it?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I have a question, because Mr. Day asked the question, was this going to be a Band-Aid or fix this system completely?
It's, uh, progress forward, complete fix.
Okay, so that what we're doing now will escalate us, we're not gonna have to go back and pay good money after bad.
Right, you won't have to do this again. This is progress forward, complete fix.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So you're, what you're working on, engineering, we're not wasting this money, it will go with what you're planning on?
Yes, this would be part of the entire engineering package anyway.
Okay. All right, I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Ganger?
Uh.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Irvin?
Uh.
Okay.
All right. Okay, the committee recommends awarding the purchase of a vape protection system for all Washington County schools to Soder Technologies in Roncoma, New York, I believe is how you say that, for fourteen thousand, forty-five dollars as a grant total bid, fully meeting specifications. This actually, it says for all Washington County schools, but mainly they're speaking of the high schools.
We're not gonna talk about schools at all. I'd like to keep that.
Yes, sir, thank you. Got you.
And that, that was paid for by grant, correct?
It's completely repented, yes.
Yes. I put that in the form of a motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Ganger?
Uh.
Mr. Meredith?
Uh.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Flanner?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Uh.
Committee recommends award of the purchase of serving counter res- renovations, excuse me, to Herb's Restaurant Supply Bristol, Virginia, on lowest total submitted bid of twenty-two thousand, four hundred, fifty-eight dollars and five cents for Daniel Boone High School, and nineteen thousand, six hundred, seventy-nine dollars and two cents for David Crockett High School. Put that in the form of a motion, sir.
Second. Okay, discussion?
Is this, uh, funds for this coming from what we voted on last year?
I don't think so. Okay, where's that money coming from?
It's coming from one forty-three.
From what?
One forty-three, it's coming from Diet Terry.
Okay, coming from your funds?
Yes, sir.
And what is?
Serving lines?
Okay.
Was it twenty-two thousands for equipment and the nineteen thousands for some of the labor and installation? If I remember right.
No, or isn't it twenty-two thousand for the Boone and then nineteen thousand? Because Boone's getting gold-plated big.
That's right, okay, okay. Ah, please leave you said that. They're not plated.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Ganger?
Uh.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Stellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flanner?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Uh.
So I have, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, Calendar Committee.
If anybody did need to read this report, it should have been in your drop box.
As it's a time, move on.
You have it.
The agenda, or the minutes and stuff wasn't in there, just a calendar.
All right, then I shall read it. The twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one School Calendar Committee members met on Tuesday, November the twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen, at two P.M. Work session in the central office at, and again on Monday, December the second, two thousand and nineteen, at four P.M. for another work session. After the two calendar options, uh, for twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one year were developed by the committee, these two options were considered by professional educator staff at all school sites during Tuesday, December the third, through Thursday, December the fifth. Each board member also receives copies of the two calendar options. Those are in your drop box, but if you need a paper copy, Dr. Cut has those. The Calendar Committee, uh, now submits the option that receive the highest professional educator votes for the board consideration at tonight's December meeting, and that is the orange version. It had three hundred and eighty-seven votes, and the yellow version had fifty-six. And I've put the report in the form of a motion to accept it.
I'll second that. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the report, say aye.
In favor?
Aye.
Uh-huh.
All those opposed? Uh, okay.
I would like to present the, uh, Calendar Version B, the orange version, to the board for recommendation, um, for, to accept the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year calendar.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Discussion? Carly, you have anything to say about it? Carly? No?
Which one, which all break this left, the early one?
Uh, October fifth. Or actually starts October the second, right?
Oh, it's the light? No.
Starts October the second, the orange version.
It's the light one.
Okay, roll call vote on the Calendar, please.
Mr. Ganger?
Uh.
Mr. Meredith?
Uh.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Flanner?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Uh.
That concludes your report?
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. The cell is, Mr. Ganger.
Uh, Mr. Day. Sorry.
Uh, did everyone get a copy or do I need to read it? If there's one empty.
We're good, go ahead, continue.
Do I need to move for approval of the report before I go into it?
Yep. I have a second on this report.
Second.
All those in favor of the report, please say aye.
Aye.
Y'all are awful quiet here, liven it up a little bit.
Okay, um, a few things we need to go over, uh, committee moves to recommend approval for Mr. Barnwell, uh, presented request in style additional equipment, playground equipment. Uh, the project will be fully funded by the PTA, uh, and we recommend approval for that project.
I have a second.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion on the roll call vote, please?
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Stellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flanner?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Ganger?
Uh.
Mr. Irvin?
Uh.
Okay, uh, oh, sorry. Okay, the committee, uh, has, we recommend approval also for Grandview Assistant Principal Terrance Churchwell presented, uh, a request to revamp the courtyard area behind cafeteria. Um, the project will be funded by the PTA as well. Um, they wanna put up, uh, like shades and add a couple picnic tables and a trash can. And we recommend approval for that.
I have a second.
Second.
Second. Uh, any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Stellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flanner?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Uh.
Motion, passes.
Okay, um, on a motion by Mr. Ganger seconded by Mr. Day, the committee unanimously approved for Mr. Patrick to work with Beeson, Luskin, Street, Thompson, and Litten to obtain an estimate for the roof replacement at Daniel Boone High School. Once the estimate is received, for Dr. Flannery to present the threat for funding to the Health, Education, and Welfare Committee. And the committee recommends approval for this.
I have a second.
Second.
Any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Stellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flanner?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Uh.
Okay.
Okay, one more, um. On a motion by Dr. Flannery and seconded by Mr. Day, the committee approves without opposition to schedule a co- a call meeting in January to receive proposal presentations from companies offering performance contracts. Uh, the committee recommends approval.
I have a second.
Second.
Could we get some more detail on that?
Well, it will, roll ahead.
Well, we, well, uh, what we was looking for was, as in like the ESG program, there were several other people wanting to come and present, so we thought about just having, instead of meeting with each one of them individually, have a call meeting, give them thirty minutes apiece, and, uh, us as a board listen and decide who we would like to hear from, if we would like to hear from any other. Was the thought.
I don't guess we need a motion on this anyway, do we? Because we're gonna have a call board meeting anyway. And that's the way, that's what we're gonna have on.
Well, are you gonna, is this gonna be a part of another meeting or it's gonna be a meeting by itself?
Well, it will be with this, discuss the price.
Because I mean, this could take some long time on how many people wanna present to us. You know, if it's four or five people, you give them thirty minutes, or two, two and a half hours, so.
And I, I, I have kinda concern about it being a meeting as opposed to a workshop. Like, I mean, I, maybe I'm splitting a hair, but if you've got a meeting, then you can take action.
But I have to have a meeting to have this price on the bill, on selling.
Well, I get that, I get that. But turn a meeting and then have a workshop after that to do something else, I'm not, I don't wanna hear something and then have to make a decision on it right then and there.
I guess I've got a question, uh, has, has somebody asked you to line these companies up? Who's lining these companies up?
If the board chooses, or chairman chooses to have a call meeting, then I guess it'll be my responsibility.
Well, he was saying there's a bunch of companies already lined up to come. The board had talked about this before.
They reached out to us.
To who? They should be reaching out to the director. It's not our job to do that. That's the director and Mr. Patrick's job.
He didn't reach out, he said he's had companies ask him, and I believe he's took them to Dr. Flannery, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah. But that's not what I just understood, so.
I've been approached by two companies, and last night, a third that has expressed interest, uh, maybe wanna be part of.
That was the guy standing out here last night?
Yeah, he's from Siemens.
Siemens.
And, uh, Johnson Controls and a company whose name, I, I've got a mental block, I can't remember the name of it.
But these people were, these people were down there at the trade show at TSB. Or it's a job, it's something like that, is to come back to the director and have the director reach out to those people, is my understanding.
Well, I think that's what we're doing, we just told them about we were talking to ESG, which Russ was down there as well, and we said we were talking about the energy savings, and they wondered why they didn't get a chance to talk about it. I mean, that's, they know we were interested, so that's the reason he's got phone calls, he has.
They had a couple to contact me, but they're a burden for a great amount.
Okay, we'll just, I'm not gonna, that motion, we're just gonna wait, we're gonna have a call board, make them look, look, look.
Oh, no.
Mister, or Miss Bell, your apologies.
There's a couple updates, if you don't mind reading these, uh, Mr. Day, because I've had parents reach out to me on two of these, an update about the baseball field at Crockett, and about the Boones Creek.
Okay, I'll, I'll read it and then we'll try to help. Um, Mr. Patrick, uh, providing an update on projects and processes and the, in the system, the update included the baseball field at David Crockett High School. Mr. Ganger asked Dr. Flannery to request the ground supervisor, A.D.T., makes the baseball field as a top priority to be ready for baseball season. Mr. Patrick explained the recent issue with the boiler at Boones Creek Elementary was a valve adjustment that was needed. Mr. Kieran?
Yes.
Are you certain? Yeah. I just, uh, Dr. Flannery, I, we've mentioned the benches at Boones Creek with the cold weather, and I've had parents contact me this week. Is there any way we could get those? Is there a way to get them?
I think they're down one side, not the other.
Yeah, that makes a difference during the cold weather, if our line pick up, whoever gets them better. So I'm, I just had some parents call, but I probably shouldn't have told you that, I'm sorry.
Is that all?
Yes, sir, I would, thank you. What is mine for?
All right. Five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll pass around the report. I don't think it's in your drop box, so I'll be glad to read it to you, but I'll wait you to see it before I read it.
It is in the drop box.
Do I need to read it then? Has everybody seen it?
I would say just, as it's the time, let's move on.
Okay. Everybody have a copy at this point? All right, since it's in your drop box, and has been, I guess, since yesterday, uh, move for approval of the report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I have a second.
Second.
Second. All those in favor of the report, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, Mr. Flanery?
Thanks, sir. Committee considers the general fund financial statement for the month of October two thousand nineteen, and the committee moves for approval.
Okay, I have a second.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Dallinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flaner?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Gangger?
Aye.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Ms. Irvin?
Aye. Motion taken.
Thanks, sir. Committee considers the federal fund financial statement for the month of October two thousand nineteen, and the committee moves for approval.
Second. Second. Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Dallinger?
Yes.
Ms. Dallinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flaner?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Gangger?
Aye.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Ms. Irvin?
Aye. Motion taken.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The committee considers the FY twenty general fund budget amendment number one. Committee moves for approval.
Second. Second.
And Mr. Hale is here, if he has some questions. Brad, would you like to quickly tell them what the adjustments are on that?
I did bring copies of the budget amendments. Some of the... I think I have ten. Some of you will have this from... This is just... Typically, we do at least two budget amendments a year, one at mid-year. It's hard to believe we're at mid-year, but this is December, so... And so, and then we'll do another one for year-end, just to true up the lines. So, this is a collection of items that... List I started making really back in July range, and just some things were unknown at the time the budget was adopted. Some... There's been some new revenue come in through donations and just revenue that's been through grants that was not known at that time. There is a larger amount on page one that you may be seeing that's new revenue. It's two hundred... I'll just go ahead and address that. Two hundred ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars. And I've talked to the director and chairman, the finance chairman, McLean, on this. There is one probably modification that I'm gonna recommend we make on this after talking with Mr. Meredith, and that is that in the line item you see, page one, two ninety-seven, three fifty-two, center column, that's where the state auditors told me to put this revenue. So, this was a windfall, it's a one-time lawsuit settlement that's been going on for many years, involving E-rate, the Federal Trade Commission was involved, so this has been going on for several years. So, this is one-time, some winnings that we've got. So, the state auditors recommended I put it there in revenue line four, four, five, six, oh. What we don't have to do, and which after talking with Mr. Meredith, and what I was not thinking about was county maintenance of effort, we don't have to budget that. We'll just receive it there, and then instead of budgeting that two ninety-seven in that line item, go to page two at the bottom. And what we'll do is we'll add that back to our budgeted fund balance pull. So, bottom of the page, line three nine zero zero zero, undesignated fund balance, we originally budgeted one million eight hundred fourteen thousand to pull. With these changes, that goes down actually to one million four eighty-eight, so I'm gonna recommend we take that two ninety-seven, three fifty-two, remove it where I originally had it, was gonna budget it, and just add it back to that fund balance. And which will still come in about thirty thousand less than where we originally budgeted to pull from fund balance. So, that will make that new total, one million seven hundred eighty-five thousand, six twenty-two, and just scratch it out on page one for that two ninety-seven. So, it's a wash.
Do I need to make a motion to amend?
Yes.
I make a motion to amend the numbers to this report he just gave me, this amendment.
I have a second.
Budget amendment.
My second.
Will you give me that number one more time? The one... The...
The new... What will be the new fund budget?
One million seven...
One million seven hundred eighty-seven... Or, excuse me, one million seven hundred eighty-five thousand, six hundred twenty-two.
When you perfect this document, this sent to me, I'll shoot it out there.
I do have one other copy, if we're missing one. I just now realized that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the amendment. Roll call vote on the amendment, please.
Ms. Dallinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flaner?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Buchanan? Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Gangger?
Aye.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Ms. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Irvin?
Aye. Okay, now, I need a... I already have a motion and a second. Roll call vote on the motion as amended.
Mr. Flaner?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Gangger?
Aye.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Ms. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Dallinger?
Yes.
Ms. Irvin?
Okay, motion taken.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Committee considers the FY twenty dietary fund budget amendment number one. Committee moves for approval. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Discussion?
And the amendment is for what you just approved in bid review for dietary, that's all this is. It's just reflecting the new expense amounts for two of the line items that you'll see, and this will lack the... If you approve the general fund budget, it will have to go to the county commission, since it changed the dollar amount of the seventy-three, one hundred category for dietary. But that's all this is. This is fully funded by dietary, as we said earlier. We had a projected surplus originally of sixty thousand, four sixty. This still has a surplus projection of eighteen thousand, three twenty-two for dietary, so should not be any funds required from the general fund for the dietary amendment.
Okay. I have a second.
Second.
Did I have a second? Okay, sorry. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Gangger?
Aye.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Aye.
Ms. Dallinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flaner?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes.
Ms. Irvin?
Aye. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The committee considered a request from the local Chamber of Commerce to pay double the annual dues this year, as they are asking all members to do. The committee voted to discuss this with the full board at the December five board meeting. So, the topic is our annual dues to the Chamber of Commerce is a level of five hundred dollars. They're asking to pay double because of the expenses they're about to incur as they move to their new location in the old mill property just off of West Wallminster.
Make a motion, we just paid the one-time dues, not double annual dues.
Second.
I have a motion.
I was about to say, we have somebody wanting to speak on behalf, and somebody wanted to speak against.
Well, I have a motion and a second. Now, I'm open for discussion.
I guess... I would like that, whether it's Mr. McLean, who... I mean, I would like to know why. I mean, I know on behalf, I guess, is... Who is here on behalf, I guess, to speak, or is that...
The director.
Okay.
He's in favor of it, and then Mr. Meredith spoke up against it, and I was ready for it, and Mr. Meredith pulled me back up on the fence, so I'm still kind of undecided at the moment.
I'd like to hear a little more then, so I'd like to hear both sides.
Well, I'm discussing... It's open for discussion. I'd like to hear both sides speak, because I don't...
All right, gentlemen, you got thirty-second seats.
I'm not into the habit of arguing with board members in open meetings since you signed my page.
Well, I don't believe we're asking you to argue. I was kind of curious about why you're a...
We might not care, but we have...
Just keep that in mind.
You can throw it out there.
The chamber has been a really good partner. They have been responsible for a lot of jobs that our students have received over many years. I've been on... A lot of people in this room on committees. They are moving to very expensive new digs there at the model mill, and I'm waffling myself at this point, but I was in favor of it yesterday, I'll say that.
All right, Mr. Meredith, given it's your opinion.
Yeah, the other thing, the other side of it. You know, the Chamber of Commerce does do a lot of work for the community, and as I stated yesterday, though, what drives this community is the education system, which we do a heck of a lot of work on there, seventy million dollars worth, that we put in of taxpayer dollars, we put into turning out good students that can make a good work for Washington County and the region. Most entities that belong to the chamber are commercial businesses. They're in the profit-making business of some way or another. Valid health, you know, everybody's charging a fee to do what they're doing, so they pay dues to the chamber to participate in help with the chamber activities. I've got a... You know, using taxpayer dollars, because that's what we're primarily, taxpayer dollars, sales tax, property tax, whatever, I'm not sure that that needs to go into a bill for the Chamber of Commerce, and that was what... That was what your ask was, and so that's why I think we ought to leave it at our dues. The county pays dues, the sheriff's department pays dues, you know, so I'd leave it if I don't, that was my argument.
Is this a one-time thing, or is this yearly, they'd be a thousand?
I think they're just asking for...
Double dues for one year.
Mr. McLean, you had your favor up, was that what you wanted to say?
One time.
Okay. All right. You want to ask a board member to say?
What is motion then?
Well, the motion is to pay double dues.
It's not five hundred.
Oh, five hundred, okay.
Yeah, one time.
It's actually five hundred seventy-two dollars.
Okay. Roll call vote on... My flip's motion?
Mr. Gangger?
No.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
No.
Ms. Dallinger?
No.
Mr. Flaner?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Buchanan?
If I say yes, I mean that we're only paying the five seventy-two, correct? Yes.
Mr. McLean?
No.
Ms. Irvin?
Sorry about it, but money's tight. No. No. I don't... I won't pay five hundred and seventy-two dollars for it. I say yes. I made the big decision, no person.
But we don't... It didn't pass, I mean, it did pass, it was five hundred.
Mr. Chairman, that completes any recommendations from the finance committee.
All right, staff reporters. Anybody got anything to say? Sue, please get up and say something. All right. New business, WCEA. They're not here. All right. BOE.
I don't know if y'all got a chance to go down there and hear this at the conference we had, but it's BOE Connect. As he's passing around the flyer, you'll see what it does. I don't know if you all... It's on their website as well. This is a good program that keeps up with all our business. Instead of using Google Docs, it's on this BOE Connect, which it's a secure login for board and the district staff. It's password protected and keeps everything together. Ability to download and print it out, well, you can read right there. And the biggest thing is too, is during our board meetings, and you actually vote using a electronic device, which will go up on the board, and it's easier, and Ms. Jennifer doesn't have to keep up with it. So, Mr. Heath may not like it, but...
No, that's great.
But it would take a lot of Jennifer's handwriting and things out that I know occupies a lot of her time, and I just think it's a good thought. Anybody have any questions?
I don't see a price tag anywhere.
It's two thousand dollars. I will say too, one thing I like about it is when there's a motion made, everybody knows the motion, it's clearly stated, which personally, I think this board does a horrible job with, and so it puts the motion out there in full, and everybody knows. And then, say, a month later, and this has happened to us, we're in a little bit discrepancy exactly what that motion was or whatever, well, you can refer back, and you'll be able to see what that motion truly was, as opposed to, well, I didn't mean that. Well, you'll know what it was now. So, I mean, it's a... I like that.
I'm sorry, so you'd be able to pull it up?
Yeah.
Instant?
Yes. And I asked if you wanted me to explain a little bit, Mr. Torres, I was asking him, and I'm not sure I hear about it. Our policy subscriber, the cost is two thousand per year is what this is, including initial setup, training, first-year service after that is two thousand dollars a year. And they'd be able to vote on their own electronic device or computer. It'd take three to four hours of training for them, and they'd also meet with the board, and they said it'd take about forty-five minutes to teach us. So, they said he could do it almost immediately, so we could actually have it for our January meeting.
Well, I can... I understand what it's gonna do to work out the district staff.
They can get on there and add things and see things. I mean, Jennifer...
Let's ask Ms. Moore, as she is the current president of the Tennessee School Board Secretaries Association, is that not correct? Outgoing, but she is there, and, you know, I would be interested to hear what she thinks in terms of making her job more effective, efficient, and lessening the stress.
Well, one of the things that Ms. Dallinger is just mentioning is, right now, the staff has to send me all their documents. I turn around, have to save it on my computer or to Google, then I copy that over to Google. This would allow them to have their own login, and they could put their own documents in there as they have those submitted. I did go to the session down there on this, so I got to participate. We actually ran like a board meeting, so I got to vote, and like you said, it pops up, and you see your vote, you see the motion, you can see the second, and they also commented that it helps you follow the Robert's rules of order more precise. And another great thing that I learned by mistake, it has an option on there, and it's called follow the leader. So, a leader will be chosen, if that's me, the tech person, the director, whoever you all choose, will be the leader. Everybody will follow that leader through the meeting. You won't be having to go to the finance folder. The leader is gonna be that for you, okay? You get disconnected or get lost, you hit that button again, it's right back there. I lost connection, had to start all over, clicked into follow the leader, and I was right back with everybody else.
Are there any other systems in your area that use this that you have?
Yeah, there were several, and I talked to several while I were down there that participate that. And it's... It's pretty much we choose how we want it. And it's, it's pretty much we choose how we want it, um, brand also, and we can, we can...
But not any add-ons, it's gonna be twenty-five hundred straight meetings?
Well, we get to because we have the policy services.
Okay.
It's where a policy service member.
And I, if you'd like, I could give you some subscribers.
Yeah.
Elizabeth and Morgan Education. Uh, I'm trying to fiddle through here to see people that are close to us, Weston County. It's not close to your Sullivan County. Um, Johnson City is, I actually thought that wasn't true, it is. So, Hamilton County, Mr. Bennett's room.
I'm not familiar with this. I, I, well, it may be that they don't have the full thing. I know that there's a website that they can go onto, we followed the meeting, uh, on the website. But I know that they don't have the voting option. And it may be something that they're just not aware of.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Have you put this in a form of a motion, Chairman, or are you going to? Cause I'll say it if you will.
Yes.
I don't know if I have that.
We, I don't think he made a, he's not made a motion yet.
It just did.
So, now that we're discussing...
Then you got a second.
All right, we're discussing now.
Um, I would, since this is gonna be reoccurring yearly, I would like us to see, uh, if we can't put it into our budget and see how it works throughout the budget year, will we bounce onto this? Because money's tight, and it's gonna get tighter.
But this doesn't, this is out of existing funds, it will not come out of our fund balance.
What existing funds?
Cause this is a form of technology, software.
What, Chad, is, is it, is it an annual subscription from today? Or do they prorate it for this year and then tie it into the next year?
I couldn't tell you. I did not ask that question.
Will that not tie their budget up, two thousand dollars every single year?
Well, we could get out of it if we didn't want to do it. I mean, I, I just thought it would be something to try for the new year, that's the reason I wanted to talk about it.
I think a lot more professional system.
Very well, may be, but we're tying up technology's funds when we don't know what they've got extra planned for this year or anything else. Well, you have a comment, Mr. Hale?
Well, we would have to, from what I'm hearing about this system, it would be charged to seventy-two, two fifty, um, three, three, or four ninety, three ninety-nine as the expense line item. Now, uh, so that would just have to come out of existing funds unless we're getting more money, more revenue for it. Otherwise, it, I guess we would just pull two thousand out of technology.
That's what I, I talked to our director, and that's what, he said that he was, that there was money available for us if we wanted. But I just think it'd take a huge burden off Jennifer, especially these midnight meetings we told them to have.
I think it'd be more efficient, I like the fact that you can pull up something right away and...
Plus, you can't follow nobody's vote, you're voting yourself.
And, the, uh... Mr. Flattery has something to say.
When a motion is made, does it actually get displayed on screen?
It's, I mean...
All right, it says, if you want that option, who actually inputs that text?
The leader, I mean, if it's me, obviously, we're talking it out.
I think you can pick and choose what things you want. If you didn't wanna vote by the, uh, clickers, or whatever you wanna call them, you don't have to. I mean, there's, you kinda piece it to your system. And that's where the training comes in. I believe Jen is one, uh, is the one that does the training, and, uh, so you kinda...
That's what I wanna know.
So is there more cost with the...
That's what I wanna know, it's flat twenty-five hundred, no matter what we do.
Two thousand.
It's gonna be two thousand.
Twenty-five hundred.
Two thousand. And then, an annual maintenance, but two thousand.
Five hundred dollars.
Right?
Hold on, hold on.
But the first...
Hold on, hold on. So we won't be using Google Drive anymore, right?
No, it'll pretty much get rid of that.
That's a great thing for me. It seems like I always have trouble with Google.
Chad, um, there was a question about, is this four thousand dollars for the first year, or is it two thousand?
Two thousand dollars for the policy members. That's the reason it's two thousand dollars.
So the initial subscription fee is waived?
It's two thousand dollars, first year, two thousand dollars, they're at.
Maybe it'll be a thousand for the...
I mean, if the initial subscription fee, and then each year after that, your maintenance fee, of two thousand. That, you wouldn't have a forty-five hundred, if, if we weren't a policy member, you wouldn't have a forty-five hundred dollars like day-to-day. You have twenty-five hundred dollars like... The, the two thousand maintenance fee comes in the following year.
So the initial subscription is two thousand, and that would be for now. And then, next year will be two thousand more, so it's not the forty-five hundred.
Okay, I have a motion and a second.
Mr. Chairman, I can show you what it looks like to, to look at the Hamilton County agenda, if you'd like. Um, now, evidently, Hamilton, and Hamilton County's not part of the, uh, policy service. Um, but, and I don't know what the system you use, but if I, if I may. This is, this is very handy, in that, you know, you sit there and you got your devices, so you can see the agenda items over here. And so you click on a particular item, and then you see the item there, and you can, you can click on any given attachment at any given point in time. And so, and you can, I can pull up any, any given agenda from any given board meeting. I can get, pull up the approved minutes from any given board meeting. Now, my, the, the point that amazed, when I was asked if Hamilton County does it, my surprise was, cause I didn't, cause I know they haven't been trained. But so if you do it, get the training, because if, if there's a feature like that's available, they don't know about it. Um, but, but just the, uh, I hit the wrong button, it's not taking me to a document. But, but the point here is, so you've got your, in, in memo form, you have any, any, literally any given document that's before the board, uh, you could pull up an, an invoice that, that Mr. Hale has, has attached.
That's what I'm thinking, maybe it can cut down on paper.
It will unless you print copies of this.
Yeah, if you would rather me upload to that instead of print...
Well, wouldn't it be easier for you? I mean, I'm thinking you, there's a big, big caveat, which I appreciate, but you know what I'm saying.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Could he just tell us what he thinks, and then we'll, his opinion, I didn't, I don't know if we'll ask you that.
The, uh, the functionality, getting rid of Google is for two thousand dollars to me. Record keeping is, is, is getting very onus. I mean, the features that it offers, you gotta get this. And there is capacity within the existing, um, technology budget to handle it, no problem.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, to purchase BOE. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Dillinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flee?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Dangert?
Aye.
Mr. Irvin?
Aye.
Roundtable. We'll start with Mr. Dangert.
Merry Christmas, that's all I got.
Mr. Flee?
Merry Christmas, appreciate everybody's hard work, I hope everybody gets a couple of weeks to recharge. And just thank everybody for all the hard work they do, and thank your students.
Thank you all, Merry Christmas.
Great job, Westview, um, United Way continues to do a great job. Uh, good job, and welcome Kay, and Merry Christmas.
Kay, you're awful quiet, I'll let you speak again.
Thank y'all for having me, go Bucks.
Mr. McLean?
Thanks, sir. Go Bucks, time of season ticking over. I'll see you next fall. Thank you for being here, appreciate you...
Glad to be here.
Participating in this new student, school board honors student program we have. I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. Bennett for being here, and of course, all the staff, and, and, uh, enjoyed the convention. Enjoyed the children singing tonight, and I simply want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas.
Mr. Ham, just wanna wish everyone a Merry Christmas, and thank you for the job you're doing, and welcome Kay, and glad you're with us.
Mr. Mary?
Glad to have everybody here, Kay, for your initial, uh, run here. I guess, Mallory, you haven't been up here yet, have you? Okay, all right, all right. I didn't know if you were here, I may have been, yeah, you may have been, I thought you might have been here checking it out. But glad you're here too, thank you for coming. Uh, staff, I hope you all have a great, uh, couple of weeks off, and some, some fun time, good time with your families. Um, looking forward to the next year and, uh, uh, in, in our next call meeting, Mr. Chairman, I'd like for you to, uh, uh, I'd like for the board members, members to share some of the things that we picked up from the recent convention, because there are several different areas. Uh, and Mr. Flee brought one up tonight, which I'm, I'm very grateful that he did, that looked like they could, uh, help move this system forward. And so I'd like for Del to, to start discussing those, uh, next, uh, first of the new year. Merry Christmas, everybody.
I just wanna wish everybody Merry Christmas, and I hope you get some rest at the end of the semester, moving into the beginning of the next semester.
All right, now, I need a round, I need a, uh, call board meeting. So everybody get out your calendar.
How about the next meeting? It's gonna be, it's...
We've got to move the next meeting.
Sorry.
Uh, I guess we can go ahead and do that. You've got now January the ninth, is that when we're gonna do it?
Yeah.
Okay. We're moving the next board meeting till January the ninth.
Will that interfere with court date?
Possibly.
That can interfere, can we move it to the seventh, that can interfere possibly with court dates?
Uh, it shouldn't, because I think y'all are done.
Oh, we are done, okay.
Well, I mean, it's gonna tie, I mean, your, your director is gonna be busy.
Knock that night, will ya?
I, I was...
Period.
Pat, you had a court open tonight.
Uh, or the eight, no, the ten.
Okay, so, the night's good with everybody?
It'll be fine.
Okay.
Six o'clock?
Six o'clock. Six thirty, six thirty, sorry, sorry. Six thirty.
So that's our January board meeting?
That is our January board meeting. Now, I need a call board meeting for the, set a price for the boot's creek. And, the people that's coming to speak to the board about the... And what, what Mitch just said.
Yeah, we can do that, and that workshop, if you do a workshop after, that'd be a great way to do that.
Twenty-first through thirtieth, and you got work Friday?
That's a way out there.
Well, I don't want to, twenty-first is an issue game.
What is it?
Can we do twenty-second?
Twenty-second sounds good on Wednesday.
It's a way game, isn't it, right there?
I have to be out of here.
Yeah, there won't be much to say.
On Wednesdays?
How about Thursday to twenty-third?
Anybody got a problem with Thursday on the twenty-third? All right, Thursday the twenty-third. Four o'clock, four-thirty? Mary Beth brought up a good point at School Board Academy's that day, and I don't think you get out till four o'clock, so can it be four-thirty or five? Four-thirty, is that good, everybody? Four-thirty, January the twenty-third. Yes, Jennifer wants to say something, everybody be quiet.
No, I just wanna say, I really enjoyed going to the convention this year, and I appreciate the opportunity to go, to go. And I really enjoyed being with the other secretaries, and it was a great time for me. And I learned a lot, we all learned a lot from each other. And I met some folks that I may talk to, but, you know, we see each other once a year. And, and I really enjoy getting to appreciate them.
And congratulations again.
Yes, we got the best.
Yes.
I hope they learned something from it, Jennifer.
Yes, I had no idea. All right, uh, everybody have a wonderful Christmas. I hope Sadie Claus comes and sees everybody. Meeting adjourned.